Good afternoon. The time is 1:31 PM. The date is Thursday, November 4th, 2021. It's another beautiful day here in paradise, and so I'm happy to call to order another meeting of the West Palm Beach Zoning Board of Appeals. First, I'll have the Board Secretary please call the roll.
Christopher Hagan.
Here.
Christopher Camerer.
Here.
Maleka Barlow.
Here.
Michael Hyman.
Here.
Michael Wood.
Here.
Alfred Fields.
Here.
Jonathan Burgess.
Okay, thank you. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of October 7th, 2021. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to review that in their package, and if so, either we'll take any amendments or changes to the minutes, or we'll entertain a motion to approve.
I so move for approval of the last month's minutes.
I'll second.
Okay. That was a motion made by Board Member Barlow and seconded by Board Member Wood. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Next, we'll go to a report from staff from the Planning Division.
Good afternoon, everyone. For the record, John Roach, Principal Planner for the city. Nothing to report other than the second item on your agenda under Continued Cases. We received an email from the applicant requesting that that application be withdrawn, so you'll just be hearing the one item, ZBA 3396, as 3393 again was withdrawn by the applicant. Also, as a follow-up to the last meeting, to provide a little easier access to the motion page, you should see on the computer there, within the PDF, I've bookmarked the motion page, so you should just be able to click on that bookmark. It'll take you directly to that page when that time is necessary, so hopefully that will make it a little more accessible to you. But other than that, I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'll move on to remarks by the Chairperson. I'll just note for the proceedings today that matters before the ZBA are quasi-judicial in nature. Anyone wishing to speak, including members of the public who wish to offer public comment, will need to be sworn in. The applicant will first make a presentation and then answer any questions from the board. The applicant will then be followed by city staff, who will provide a presentation and recommendation to the board, and then answer any questions. Members of the public will then be given the opportunity to provide comment, with each person receiving up to three minutes. City staff will also insert any public comment received in advance at today's meeting, emails, voicemails, et cetera, into the record. And the applicant will then have an opportunity for rebuttal after that time. The floor will then be closed, and the board will go into executive session for discussion, a motion, and then vote. Four votes are required for approval of any matter. And just as a side note, I do have a hard stop today at 2:30, so hopefully we can finish before then, but if so, I will hand the gavel over to our Vice Chair if needed. So with that, we'll move on to Declaration of Any Ex parte Communication. I'll start on my left with Board Member Burgess.
No ex parte communication.
Okay. Board Member Hyman?
No ex parte communication.
Okay. Board Member Barlow?
No ex parte communication.
Okay. Board Member, or Vice Chair Camerer?
No ex parte communications.
And Board Member Wood?
No ex parte communication.
And Board Member Fields?
No ex parte communications.
And for me, the Chair, no ex parte communication either. Okay, with that, we'll move into the public hearing, and I will ask our Secretary to swear in the speakers, please.
A request by John Schmidt of Smith Nichols on behalf of Southern Boulevard Holdings LLC for variance to the required rear setback for the placement of an outdoor canopy. The approximately .86 acre property is located at 330 Southern Boulevard, within Commission District Number Five, Commissioner Christina Lambert.
Okay, and those who wish to offer testimony are standing, and so I'll ask that they raise a right hand and be sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear firm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start off with the applicant, then, to please...
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
As I did last month, I need to recuse myself from this case, and since this is the only case on the agenda, I'd like to excuse myself from the meeting.
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Well, that's not letting me start from the beginning here. Any idea what's...
Something happened?
Yeah.
It looks like they accidentally got deleted.
Oh. Not good. Good afternoon, Board Members and Chair. John Schmidt, Agent for the applicant Flanagan's Restaurant. We were a continuation from last month's board hearing, but I'll give a brief overview of what we spoke about before. The location of 330 Southern Boulevard between Dixie and Olive, .86 acres, really kind of located in proximity to residential streets to the south and to the north. Our request is for a canopy tonight, and this canopy location, you know, it was an expansion of the outdoor area. The canopy was built without a permit at the time, and at the time of the occurrence and the placement of the canopy, you know, the main focus was providing required separation standards, safe distancing for customers, as well as the restaurant's ability to even survive, you know, when this was going on a year ago. You have to remember, you know, that the city hall wasn't even open. It was placed there, quite simply, as a notion for business survival. The restaurant's been there since 1985, over 36 years in the community. It's not a corporately-owned facility. It's owned by the Pults family that are back here, that I'll speak later on tonight. It provides a livelihood for him, his wife, and two sons' families. They employ over 85 people in our community, and it's a very family-friendly atmosphere, and I think a staple of the community. Our previous, or what you saw last month was kind of the orange area here, that, if you can see my puck moving around, the request was for a setback for the canopy. So over to the left side is a picture of the canopy. It's kind of low-level. There's an existing six-foot wall it was attached to, and there's some doors and windows for operational standards, why this was put in this location. You know, it just works operationally well. It provides additional outdoor seating option, which the restaurant, you know, just had a small area before. It provides additional spacing for seating, both indoor and outdoor. So indoor, they've separated some of the booths apart to provide more seating, or more seating separation, and then it also allows some seating outdoors with additional separation. It helped maintain their customer base. It helped them maintain their current parking, and it's really in alignment with a previous variance that was granted on the back of the building here. So the back of the building is about four feet, so, I mean, it just, it worked well utilizing the existing wall. It was efficient use of the land, not taking parking away, and we have the support of the two directly adjacent neighbors here highlighted in green. So they haven't had a problem with it. They haven't had a problem with it for eight to nine months, has been operating, no code enforcement has been called, and we have letters of support in the file, which we submitted last month. Based on last month's meeting, you know, the direction of the board was to try to go and get a solution with staff. Can you guys find a compromise? So the applicant went out in the field, brought their aluminum fabricator and the canopy fabricator, and said, you know, "What can we do here to, you know, kind of make this a little bit better?" So what we're proposing was to slide this main area, this 28-foot area, forward to meet the 15-foot setback, but keeping 16 feet that's of the structure that's already there. There's some operations that right outside the building out of there, and we thought that, you know, that that might be a good compromise, but staff's not supporting it. It's, you know, it's black and white in the code. You either meet the setback or you don't. We feel that there's a hardship. We've identified those hardships, and these hardships haven't been, you know, a result of something that the applicant's done. It's really kind of, it's really COVID that's done that. I wanted to talk about, you know, staff's concerns of why they weren't supporting this variance. It was because of noise, because of smells, because of lighting. So I just want to show you, you know, that in this blue area, which is five feet from the property line, we're able to have outdoors, we're able to have outdoor seating there. So whether it has a canopy over it or not is really not the issue here, it's whether you have an actual structure in that setback. So we can have seedings, we can have umbrellas, we can have a tent, but we can't have a permanent structure. And that's what was built, and that's what we're asking for the variance from. The seating's permitted within five feet, we can have umbrellas, tents, you know, the smell, the noise, you know, that can happen there by right, it just can't have a permanent structure over it. So you can't have seating, you just, you can't have this canopy over it. We felt that the canopy actually helped, you know, deter the noise, deter the smell, and direct lighting down, so we thought it was really kind of a benefit of what we were doing. We meet and exceed all 10 criteria, A through J, of the standards and justifications, and, you know, the hardship is not caused by the applicant. There is constantly changing CDC amendments, directives, and standards, and daily updates that they're having to deal with. The city and many other establishments among town are working in less than regular operating standards. I mean, you know, one of the comments from staff was, hey, the government, or the governor has, you know, lifted all the standards. Well, if that was the case, you know, I don't know why we're all standing behind glass. You have to have the mask to come into this building. There are signs posted, you have to do a mask, so that's what the, that's the operating environment the client's having to kind of go through, and so providing this covered outdoor seating area to be out of the sun, I think, is a minimal request. So we submitted for a building permit, we went through all the comments, pending your outfall today, we would get a permit if it were permitted. Our original ask was 44 feet. We'd like you to support that, but we dropped it down to 16, if you feel you can support that. We think the minimal setback distance is very, is very minimal, and we have multiple letters of support from our surrounding neighbors and our directly two-adjacent neighbors that this would directly affect. I have the Pults family here. Leon would like to speak first, and then his son Zach, that operate the facility, and then we'll answer any questions that you may have, and I'll leave it at that.
This is Sofia State, your name.
Mr. Chair, Harrison, Board Members, good afternoon. I'm Leon Pults. My sons and I own the Flanagins on Southern Boulevard. Beginning of last year was dealing with panic and chaos every single day. The idea for the awning was started to keep guests safe and help implement the ever-changing rules and regulations. There were daily changes to comply with, from Washington, Tallahassee, Palm Beach County, West Palm Beach, and our corporate office in Fort Lauderdale, and they did not all always agree. There were mandates that required adding additional staff to be door openers, separate bussers, separate food runners, separate bathroom attendants, masks, gloves, sanitation stations, no indoor seating, partial seating, changes of hours, et cetera, on and on. We were instructed by multiple, we were inspected by multiple agencies multiple times. Every single time, we were complimented on our procedures for keeping our guests safe. We were concerned about the very survival of our restaurant. We looked very hard at the possibility of closing, which made a lot of sense financially for the duration. Lots of restaurants, such as all of the Duffy's, all of Rodney Mayo's restaurants, and many others, chose to close, but we're responsible for many, many employees and their families, and we take that very seriously. We're still dealing with it. It does not seem that we, it does not seem that we're out of the woods yet with new variants and ever-changing government mandates that still don't always agree. Like John said, you know, it looks like everything's fine, everything's better, everything's okay, yet here we are with masks and, you know, it's day-to-day, you know, is tomorrow on the TV, is there going to be a new variant? Are we going to be back where we were? God, I hope not. A few weeks ago, there was a mandate from the government that was issued and then retracted minutes later. More stuff to keep track of. I've been with Flanagins for over 50 years. I started as a salesperson in Big Daddy's and eventually bought the franchise after a mortgage on our house that my wife was not too happy about, and loans from families and friends. I converted the Big Daddy's Lounge to Legend's Restaurant, and a few years later, changed it to Flanagins. My wife worked with me for many years in the restaurant. My sons have worked with me since they were 14 or 15 years old. The awning is a significant investment for us. We were trying to get the safely engineered awning up as quickly as possible and remove the temporary tents that were a safety hazard. The location lined up with the rest of the building, so it looked good and would have the least impact. Again, we're very concerned about the survival of the restaurant. This location is not corporately-owned. This is the only Flanagins franchise that is not owned by someone whose last name is Flanigan. We live or die financially on our own. We've tried to address all of staff's concerns as logically as possible. My family and our great staff respectfully ask that you grant this variance. Thank you.
Son Zach has a few comments.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Board Members. Nice to see everyone again. For those of you that were not at last month's meeting, I'll go back over my testimony. I'm going to try and go as quick as I can, because I know there's a time constraint. First, thanks for volunteering your time here today and allowing me to speak on my family and Flanagins in West Palm Beach behalf. My name is Zach Pults. This location is somewhat different than the other Flanagins, and it is solely owned by my family. It is not a corporate store or limited partnership. My dad, mom, my brother and I have all worked at various roles in this location. Over those many years, we have dealt with and overcome numerous challenges, but nothing could have prepared us for the last two years and the pandemic that overnight changed our store. We went from a fully opened restaurant to having zero inside seating in the blink of an eye. While several restaurants in our area, including Duffy's, either decided to voluntarily close their doors, leaving their staffs unemployed, or were forced to shutter their business because of the pandemic, we quickly changed our business model. Instantly, we became an outside takeout and delivery business. We did not use any outside delivery services, but instead used our own staff to make deliveries to keep as many people employed as possible. Over the coming months, it felt like each day presented new obstacles to overcome, as our staff dealt with the risk of COVID, and we maneuvered our way through the many directives from the state, county, and city officials. During that time, the restaurant was losing money, even after reducing as many costs as possible. Those months of uncertainty were a very scary period for my family and for our staff's family. It was very difficult and heartbreaking to watch my dad worry day and night that the business that he had put so much work into from the time my brother and I were kids, and through the following decades, was now struggling to survive. There was no guarantee that it would all work out at the end. This was not a self-inflicted wound. We had not lowered our quality of food or stopped emphasizing guest service. The risk of losing our livelihoods and those of our staff was brought on by an event that no one predicted. Still, we continued forward, going all-in to do everything we could to keep the business going. My brother and I would send out emails to our neighborhoods we live in and offer to drop off food at the end of our shifts for extra sales. When outside seating was allowed, we quickly put up temporary tits to accommodate our guests and get more staff back to work. These tents were tied down to weights and provided shade, but were proved to be unsafe in high winds. A storm made quick use of the metal framework, tossing it in the air and twisting it into a metal knot. Fortunately, this rainstorm occurred overnight, and no one was hurt, but we learned that pop-up tents were not a realistic solution. As inside seating slowly was allowed in various stages, we did everything we could to ensure the safety of both our guests and our staffs. We eliminated tables to allow proper spacing, hand sanitizers were installed throughout the restaurant, all of the staff wore gloves, we relocated our hostess area outside, everyone wore masks, and we even employed someone to open and close the front doors as guests visited. We put safety as a top priority. Even so, we still had guests who chose not to return to inside seating. It became evident that even with all the safety measures in place, a large portion of our clientele were not comfortable returning to restaurants where they were seated inside. It was in that mindset of survival that the idea of adding a more secure outside area was determined as the best way to accommodate those guests that had hesitations about dining indoors, and secure awning was placed in an area that was otherwise not being used. I apologize that we did not consult with the city. At the time, we'd become accustomed to having to move quickly to decide on actions and move forward. The outside area quickly became a location that was used by guests for many reasons. Several regulars returned, as well as new guests who wanted to be outside. I've spoken with families visiting from out of town. The regulations in some of the visitor states are much more stringent than our state with indoor seating, and they felt more comfortable dining in this open-air environment. While there is a large portion of the population that does seem unconcerned about COVID, there is a segment of our residents and visitors that have apprehensions. Those with small children who don't have an opportunity to receive a vaccine, guests with underlying health conditions who feel more at risk to complications if they were to come in contact with the virus, and sometimes overlooked, are those guests who have taken the virus seriously, perhaps received a vaccine, but still feel more comfortable in an area where they feel is lower risk. Everyone we speak with has a different level of concern, and we strive to do our best to make them all feel like our restaurant is a place they can visit and enjoy their time without worry. Staff would like us to completely relocate the awning. As you may be aware, the cost of doing business is rising, and in almost no place is it more challenging than a restaurant. We believe in investing in our staffs and have adjusted our pay rates to stay competitive in the marketplace, but rising costs in food supplies and insurance, among others, make large expenditures more challenging. We do our best not to raise prices unless absolutely necessary. We have several items on our menu that we currently lose money on, and I know your job is not to make sure we are profitable or not, but I think it is worthwhile to consider that what moving the awning would mean for a small business, for its staff, and then for its guests. Lastly, this is an awning placement that is an efficient use of land. The area of the property cannot be used for parking. Staff's report raised concerns about noise, lighting, and smell. While at last month's meeting, I addressed how all of these concerns would be handled if the awning was kept in its original location. The awning can be used to ease these concerns compared to having an open-air seating area. At the conclusion of last month's staff meeting, it appeared that there was some support for the variance, but we were asked to meet with staff to see if a further compromise could be reached. I want to assure you that we heard your instructions and decided immediately after the meeting to brainstorm ideas for a compromise. After leaving last month's meeting, my dad, brother, and I went directly to the restaurant and looked at how we could further address staff's concerns and the board's instructions. We also consulted with Southern Awning. The resulting idea was what we think is a very fair compromise that really looked at not just compromising for compromising sake, but addresses the concerns that were raised. While we would like to keep the awning in its original location, as has been presented, we're willing to move the main portion of the structure to an area that reaches the setback. This would greatly reduce those concerns about lighting, noise, and smell. By moving the handicap parking back, we would also ease staff's concerns from last month that a handicap guest has too far of a distance to back up. We are now respectfully asking for a variance of just 16 feet of awning along the south side of the property instead of the original 44. In square footage, the amount shrinks from an original 528 square feet to just 192, a reduction of 64%. I hope you can see that we really did take your advice and worked to find a solution. Unfortunately, I did not think that staff took to heart the instruction that you gave us both. When we met with them, they, of course, liked the compromises that we proposed, but did not offer any conciliation of their own. Staff seemed stuck on removing the small awning and instead made arguments for arrangements that could endanger nearby residents. Staff also liked, staff, staff's ideas also seemed somewhat ironic to their original position. Allow me to explain. During the meeting with staff, they had said that if we removed the awning, it would be perfectly fine to still place tables along the wall and to use umbrellas. We quickly pointed out the umbrellas would be a safety concern. A strong wind can lift them into the neighbor's yard, could injure guests, and could hit power lines that run along the property, causing significant danger. When we had a previous tent located there, the storm that I spoke of earlier did lift it into the power lines. The current awning is securely tied into the building, and the walls are constructed, into the walls, and it's constructed to be safe during high winds. The suggestion of using tables and umbrellas also led to an interesting and ironic exchange. Some of staff's original concerns to the awning were the noise, lighting, and smell. Do these concerns from staff disappear if we decide to put tables along the wall with umbrellas as they suggested? Staff struggled to answer those questions. Neighboring residents would much prefer the small awning than uncovered areas where noises and smells could travel easier. An awning would also contain the lighting and not bleed into other areas. Tables with umbrellas would need to be lit from above, and the bleeding effect would be greater. It is important to mention that we have received support for the awning from both neighboring property owners and tenants, and has been presented with letters and written comments submitted previously. It is good business for us to be good neighbors. Lastly, staff points out that we relied heavily on the pandemic in our reasoning for the awning. Let me take the time to say, yes, of course we did. The pandemic played a vital role in almost all decisions related to our business over the last year and a half. We almost lost our business because of COVID-19, and our employees almost lost their jobs because of COVID-19. We continue today dealing with the Delta variant and the risk of other variants. Can anyone in the room say with certainty that we are not going to have another surge in cases during the holidays or sometimes next year? Do we know if future governing bodies will reduce inside seating again? Staff would argue that we've been given the all-clear regarding seating, but the truth is much more complicated than that. It is not the governor, or even the CDC, that decides people's level of comfort. It is the public. They are the ones who make the decision on their own level of how they feel safe and how they can operate in society. Look at this room. Why do we have the barriers, space seating, overflow capacity? My family's business is a restaurant. A good portion of the public wants, and in some cases needs, areas to eat and socialize where they can feel comfortable. We have provided solutions on how we can address the areas of concern for both awning locations, and offered a solution that follows your instructions to compromise while still being able to take care of our guests who choose outside dining. I respectfully ask that you consider all of these circumstances, the uncertain future, the fact that since the awning's existence, it has been well-received and supported by our neighbors, our effort to work with the board and staff to try and find a compromise that makes sense, and a desire from our guests for a safe area to dine with friends and family and be part of the community. We respectfully ask that you please support our minimal variance. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the applicant's presentation.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll move into questions from the board for the applicant, so I'll start off with Board Member Hyman.
Thank you. John, could you address your comment a little bit deeper? I'm sorry. Can you address your comment a little bit deeper when you said that this is not a hardship that was created by the applicant, if you would, please?
Well, sure. You know, one of the standards are, I'd have to use maybe a different example for you, but, you know, you can't ask for a variance from a setback just because you want something closer to a property line. If there was a taking from the property, and you were left with a smaller property, and therefore you were using less, had less usable land, you know, you might have, you would have an outside hardship. We feel that the COVID was a hardship on us. The city wasn't open, you know, we were all, I think, I think everyone would have to agree here, we were all kind of scrambling to, you know, to how, how to keep our business up and running. Yes, you know, they did it without a permit, but, you know, the area was not used, there's already a wall there, the awning's low-scale, and the neighbors support it. So, you know, I think that, you know, we're going to continue with this COVID variant, and it requires us to have spacing, both inside and outside, have choices for indoor and outdoor seating. We meet the parking code, you know, for all of our current building, as well as this additional outdoor seating, and I think the hardship that we're showing is the COVID variant.
Any other questions for the applicant? Board Member Hyman? Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to Board Member Barlow.
Yeah, so would you mind first addressing, good afternoon. The staff here are employees of the city that represent residents here, and they have a code that they must follow. So with the comment that was made that when you guys were asked to go back to see if there's some type of a compromise, how do you address that they're bound by the code, just like every single board member here is, is that if you cannot fit within the ten, and they're finding that you only comply with two of them, how have you done your due diligence in going to them to help them address so that they can say that all 10 factors comply? If you could help walk me through, because for some of these, I'm just at a loss, even when I wasn't here last month, how we got as far as we did with even asking you guys to see if there's some kind of compromise.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll try to do that. So I agree with you that, you know, staff is really handcuffed, it's black and white, and I think the board is in place, there is a venue to show that, you know, the code doesn't work for absolutely everybody, and that there are situations that require amendments or a spot amendment to the code, and we're asking for that kind of spot amendment for the setback.
So I'd like to clarify, we have no authority to make amendments. There are 10 factors that allow for variances, and that's what this board does, which is permit certain variances. So not to amend any code, but to go beyond the factors that are presented to us. So I just want to make sure we're very clear on what our language is, so that we can all come together and make sure that we have the evidence when we go to vote.
Okay, and I agree with you. So there are 10 standards, they're in your, they were provided in your backup.
Yeah.
They're in the presentation. We feel that we absolutely meet them. We've went point by point, you know, addressing each and every one of those. Staff has, from what I can see in the report, staff had just said, well, they don't. They haven't said why we don't, but they haven't said we don't. And so I'm saying, you know, we have, we can go line by line on these, each additional one, if that will help. But I've absolutely put them in here and part of the original evidence that was provided.
And so what I'm struggling with then is when I review these, you all still have a lot of property, unlike most of the restaurants on Dixie Highway, with respect to your parking lot, where there are, there's an option where you wouldn't have to have that remaining structure not comply with the 15-foot setback. Because again, you've already, when you're before us today, you've already downsized how much of a canopy, and if it's talking about, all this evidence about you want to maintain and stay in business, again, your alternative, not best scenario, is have a bunch of tables with or without umbrellas so that you can still successfully be a profitable business. But again, it allows us to make sure that our code is complied with. So how do you address the fact that you've got all this open space with parking lots, that you could reconfigure where you put your structure, or the fact that you've reached some kind of compromise by moving part of it back? So why not give up that remaining 16 feet, either comply or just put outdoor tables?
Yeah. So to find other space within the property wasn't really possible. Although we meet parking code for this property, we actually lease additional spaces at the Walgreens for employees to the west and directly across the street in the evenings. So parking is at a premium here, so we didn't want to lose any of those. Yes, we have put additional seating out in this area that was underutilized, but, you know, the canopy option was put there after, after they had, they had a series of, I don't know, you know, four to six tents out there. And so even though they're secured, the storm came through, I saw a picture, and it flipped them all up into the, into the sky and went over these power lines you can see over here. So they felt that this was a safer situation and a safer ask.
I have no further questions for the applicant.
Okay. We'll get to Vice Chair Kimmer. Any questions for the applicant?
Sure. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Schmidt, I have a couple of questions. I'm looking at the staff report here, and so my understanding, the regulation at the moment, I understand the purpose of the 15-foot setback is to provide adequate distance separation between adjacent to similar incompatible uses to reduce any possible negative impacts between uses. So according to your testimony, that even without the canopy, you can have seating along the, can you explain that to me? Because that was sort of different from, I don't think we discussed that in the last meeting.
No, we didn't. And it was, it came up, and it came up when we went and met with staff. We said, hey, we're, you know, we're trying to address your concerns, and your concerns are light, noise, smells. So can't we, how, where can we put outdoor seating? Well, there's a, there's a five-foot buffer requirement. So that was really kind of a five-foot setback where, from the property line. So we've got a wall that's within three feet that you're seeing here in the picture, and then two feet behind that, you could have people sitting there, enjoying meals, you know, operating within that space. So we didn't talk about it last time, but I guess our point was if that, if the noise and the compatibility to the neighbors was their issue, you can still do it there. It just can't be covered with a permanent structure. It can be covered with an umbrella. It can be covered with a tent, but you can't have the permanent structure. So we felt that the low scale of this, utilizing the wall as part of the structure was, you know, a minimal impact and have the support of the neighbors.
Okay. So can you explain to me the alternative that you've come up with and why you need the remaining 16 feet?
It's primarily an operational item, so I'm going to ask the operator to come up and kind of talk about why that, why we just couldn't push the whole thing. All right?
Sorry. Can you go ahead and repeat the question?
Sure. I was asking Mr. Schmidt about, I see how you, your alternative is set up, and just if you could explain the necessity of maintaining the 16-foot portion of the original 44 that you had proposed.
So we'd still like to use it for either seating or a waiting area that would be beneficial for our guests, because we feel without it, then you're going to have those problems. Well, we've gotten support of the neighbors right now with the awning being there. Again, it's lit from inside, so there's no bleeding of the property for light. The noise, it's covered, so you have less than you would if it was an open air. And smell, as I discussed last time, and it's very easy to put fans on those sides that would blow this way so that you're keeping smells from going up and over into the neighbor's side. For us, it makes more sense. By moving it forwards and keeping that spot there, too, speaking with Southern Awning, when they, when they move it in, it's going to be tied to that. So having it, that section tied to the existing section that's there, that's tied into the building and tied into the wall, helps make it a more secure structure.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Okay. Board Member Wood?
I have no questions.
Okay. And for Salted Fields?
No questions. Just want to say thank you to the applicants for getting back with staff and trying to work through a solution.
Thank you.
My only question for the applicant is, there were, in our, in the staff recommendation review, they did, you know, they have issued a recommendation of denial, but did offer, if the board were to approve this, three conditions that are related to sound, lighting, et cetera. My question is if you have reviewed those, and if those, if the board chose, are those acceptable? Would you accept those conditions if the board were to approve this?
We did review those three conditions, and yes, we would be acceptable to those three.
Okay. Yeah, no further questions, none additional from the last meeting. So I'll move to the staff presentation then, please.
Sorry. I can go anywhere. Sorry.
Okay. Good afternoon. I first wanted to start off quickly by going over the history and timeline for the variance application. So basically, the variance stems from the illegal installation of a non-conforming outdoor canopy without permits to provide additional seating, outdoor seating, as the applicant had mentioned, that this was due to the COVID pandemic. So in April of this year, the property was cited for the legal installation of the canopy. Then in June, the violation was heard by the special magistrate, and the applicant was ordered to obtain the necessary permits and building permits, variance and building permits for the canopy by December 13th of this year. Otherwise, the property would start accruing daily fines. In July, the variance application for the existing non-conforming canopy was received by planning staff. Then in October, the variance application was presented before the ZBA. And at the ZBA meeting, staff had a recommendation of denial for the variance application, and the reason for the denial was because the variance was not necessary. Based on staff's assessment, the canopy could be relocated to meet setback requirements per the ZLDRs. Staff had also presented an alternative location for the canopy configuration that could meet the required setbacks. At the, at the meeting, the board could not reach a unanimous decision. With the variance requested, the applicant had requested that the variance application be continued to the November ZBA meeting. The board had also directed staff, as noted by the applicant, that we meet to see if a compromise could be achieved. So on October 22nd, the applicant had met with staff to present a compromise at an alternative location for the canopy. However, staff is not in support of the proposed alternative, and those reasons will be discussed by presentation. So I wanted to present you a short video clip of the existing canopy that triggered the variance application. So the canopy is there to provide additional outdoor seating, permanent outdoor seating for the restaurant use. So this is another angle of the canopy. It abuts a residential zoning district. You can see how close the canopy sits to the residential zoning district. That is the restaurant panning north to Southern Boulevard. So this slide summarizes the variance request. This also shows the existing canopy that was presented before the ZBA in October. And the image to the right is the proposed reconfiguration of the canopy. So in both the existing and proposed layout, the requested variance is 12 feet. So that is a three-foot setback for both applications. However, in the proposed layout, there's the canopy for the proposed layout. The segment for the existing canopy, a portion of it has been shifted north to meet the setback. So basically, the variance is for a smaller portion of the overall length of the canopy. So just to summarize staff's analysis of the applications, of the applicant's proposed alternative being presented today, and I wanted to reiterate from my last meeting as well as today, that staff does understand the hardship of the pandemic on local businesses, especially the service industry. However, this goes back to the starting point on why the applicant is seeking a variance in the first place, and that is because the existing canopy was installed without building permits. At the October ZBA, staff had presented a variation of an alternative site layout and canopy configuration that could beat the required setbacks. Stemmed straight in that compliance with the ZLDRs could be achieved, and therefore the variance is not required. The applicant's proposed alternative canopy layout still requires a variance. It's the same 12-foot variance to the setback, but reduces the length of the canopy encroaching into the required setback. So staff does not support the applicant's alternative plan. It is in staff's position that the alternative plan is a compromise to an existing illegal installation that could have been avoided had the applicant come in with building permits. Also, based on a variation of staff's alternative design, there really isn't a physical hardship with meeting the required setback. And again, that was demonstrated through staff's exercises of reconfiguring the canopy So there's no physical hardship with meeting the required setback. Staff also does not agree with the applicant's justification. The applicant cannot use a previously approved variance for the property unless it is one of the variance standards required for the consideration of the variance. The purpose for the minimum setback requirement is adequate distance separation between dissimilar uses, and that is for the protection of the adjacent uses. The purpose of the outdoor canopy was to provide outdoor seating for guests during the pandemic. So the proposed canopy is a permanent structure. It's not temporary. And the impacts of indoor and outdoor seating is different. Permanent versus temporary is also another thing that needs to be considered, too. So the impacts are greater. Based on staff's assessment of the 10 variance standards, staff does not believe that the application has met the 10 variance standards, and therefore, staff is recommending denial of ZBA case number 33-D six. So before I conclude my presentation, we have received one voice message, which I will play for the record.
My name is Jill Levinger. I am the General Manager of Lanigan's in West Palm Beach, and I am calling in regards to our outdoor patio and pretty much what it's done for us over the last year and a half to two years since COVID started. You know, none of us knew what was going to happen when COVID began, how long this was going to last, how it was going to affect the business in the long term. We weren't sure. But we did everything that we could do as a business when the pandemic began, and it was a really scary and unique time for our staffs and ourselves. And we all worried about our jobs, our health, our safety, but we persevered. And we had so many of our staff members who felt safer coming to work. We were able to supply jobs when we weren't sure we were going to be able to do that. We were forced to go to 25% of indoor capacity, but we were allowed to the 100% of outdoor seating. We came up with the idea of having an outdoor patio. It gave us the opportunity to have guests come finally be able to dine in and feel safe. That's something that brought us very close to the community, and that I really appreciate, and I know my staff really appreciates to this day. We all do. And, you know, currently, we have guests that will only sit outside on our outdoor patio. It's where they feel the safest. They have a calm, cool, comfortable atmosphere out there. We have a fan. We make it very accessible to enter the restaurant if they need to use the bathroom or whatever their needs might be. It's been a wondrous thing for us to be able to support the community with and be able to provide a service that they might not be able to get elsewhere. They're able to dine in, not eat out of the to-go box, not do their own dishes at home, be able to dine in at a restaurant, see their favorite faces, feel like they're at home. That's what Lanigan's is about, and we need to continue to do that for our community. That's who we are. I fully support this. Thank you so much.
And that was it. If there are any questions for staff, I'd be more than happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you. I'll start off with Board Member Barlow. Any questions of staff?
No, no.
Okay. I'll move to Vice Chair Kimmer. Any questions of staff?
Sure. Thank you. What is the purpose of this setback requirement?
The 15-foot setback?
Yes.
So if this was abutting a commercial district, there would obviously be a smaller setback because they're compatible similar uses, which would be five-foot minimum. But because it is residential and it is considered a dissimilar type of use, the setback is greater to minimize the impacts that would be, you know, impacting the residential or the, you know, the use adjacent to it.
Okay. So you heard the applicant testify that even without the canopy, they could put tables out there and people could sit out there and dine. Do you agree with that?
Well, I mean, we're talking about with the structure, it is a permanent structure. So temporary, if, and of course, the city would have to review something like that even if it were outdoor seating, and there's nothing in the code that would prevent them from putting outdoor tables with umbrellas. But, you know, obviously, staff would have to look at it, you know, with regards to being able to meet the parking requirements, but staff would also look at being able to see what mitigation could be implemented to protect or provide some kind of additional buffer between those outdoor tables to the adjacent residential.
So I don't actually follow that. So is it your belief that if the applicant wanted, forget about there being a canopy, if the applicant wanted to use that space to have outdoor seating, put tables and umbrellas there, that they would have to apply to the city for a variance or a permit of some sort?
They wouldn't have to apply for variance, but of course, the parking, they would have to provide to staff, because this is additional outdoor seating, and they would still be required to meet the parking requirement, and this is something that the city would need to assess or staff would have to assess. So we would also look at those impacts as well.
So then it would be about?
But no variance would be required. There's nothing in the code that requires them to, you know, that would prevent them from providing tables there with umbrellas.
Okay. Assuming that they can use that outdoor space to seat people and have outdoor dining, what is precluding the use of a canopy? How is that now somehow?
It is a permanent structure, so tables could be moved around, whereas the space would be dedicated, would be considered more permanent.
I just want to add on to what you were talking about.
Oh.
For the record, John Rich, Principal Planner. So as Ms. Louie is indicating, the zoning code regulates the structure aspect of it. That we have to enforce, and hence, you know, the 15-foot setback, if the structure is within that setback, you know, staff cannot issue a permit for that, and hence, they're before you for the variance. With regards to the outdoor seating, as Ms. Louie indicated, our zoning code doesn't regulate it, doesn't indicate where it can go, where it can't go, and so forth. And so, you know, there's two ways to look at. One is it's a loophole, you know, or it's something that the zoning code doesn't address that they could potentially take advantage of in the sense of by providing that outdoor seating. But the only part that we can regulate in terms of permitting and distance from a property line is the structure itself. So, you know, it's not that we're disagreeing with you, hence, you know, Ms. Louie indicated in her staff report and her alternative plan that, you know, outdoor seating could potentially go there. But we do also want to be respective of the fact that it is adjacent. But we do also want to be respective of the fact that it is adjacent to residential properties. We understand that there has been support from some of those residents that are there, but we also need to understand that residents change over the years, and yet, the structure could potentially stay for, you know, longer than I'm here or what have you. So you know, those are all the things that are being weighed. And in this one, it was more of, we felt like there was an alternative that didn't require a variance at all, and hence, that's the reason we were recommending denial. You know, asking us to go back and negotiate was kind of difficult in the sense of we did feel like there was an alternative, and we don't want to use variances as a negotiating tactic where someone comes in asking for 20 feet when, you know, the intention is a, we'll just ask for a 10-foot variance, you know, that's all we really need. Again, we felt like, you know, there wasn't the hardship here because there was an alternative that required no variance at all.
Well, as I understand, the alternative proposed by the city actually required the applicant to remove the handicap parking spaces or situate them in another location.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat that?
My recollection is that the alternative proposal that the staff made would require the relocation of the handicap parking spaces.
So this was the alternative that was presented. So basically, it would require, so they were under the existing reconfig, under the existing conditions right now, they're located right here. You can see it through the orange here. So the purpose was to try to see where, you know, the canopy could fit in order to meet the needs of the applicant or the desires of the applicant to provide outdoor seating, but also try to rearrange the parking efficiently as well as meet the required parking on-site. So with the ramp being located in a certain area, the front door being right here in the ramp, it just made more sense for staff to think about reconsider, think about relocating the handicap parking here, which is closer to the ramp. But they did not lose any handicap parking on the site with this reconf, this alternative.
Right. And I think the applicant's response was that where you propose these, at number three, those parking spaces, that would be right in front of the entranceway to their restaurant, as I recall. Anyways, I guess this is the overall issue. I just, I really, I understand what the purpose of this setback rule is, and the idea of having impermissible use adjacent to a disparate property. I just don't understand how it advance, how this purpose is advanced here by the denial, given that the applicant apparently can use that space as it is for outdoor dining.
Again, like as John had mentioned, that we can only regulate or look at it from a structural standpoint. So that's where really the loophole is, the zoning code, so...
No, I mean, I get the point of why there's a setback requirement here, you know, commercial versus residential. You want to preclude excessive noise from bothering residents and all that other sort of, you know, commercial activity. But if they can already use that area for commercial activity, I don't know how this, enforcing this provision in this manner advances that. But anyways, that, those are my questions.
Okay. Thank you. Board Member Wood, any questions of staff?
Yes. You mentioned parking, but I believe in the testimony from the previous meeting, it was determined that the parking requirements were all met, even with the additional outdoor seating. Am I not correct?
Correct.
So parking is not an issue at all here?
Parking is not an issue.
Okay. Okay.
Again, like...
The, so the, the, the position of staff changes the location of the handicap, and my comments from the last meeting were that it places an environment where the handicap, a handicap customer would have to navigate among seated tables to get to the entrance to the restaurant rather than have a clear path into the restaurant. So I was not in favor of that alternative. So this board asked both the applicant and staff to go back and try to reach a compromise, but that was never going to happen because staff's position was never going to change, correct?
That is correct. I mean, had the applicant come in with permits, there is really no need for the variance application to begin with. Again, the canopy was installed without building permits, and for us to accept...
We recognize that the, we recognize that the, we recognize it was done without permits, and that's been addressed in the previous testimony, and they're now, they've now applied for the permits, and pending this decision, they'll be able to get their permits or not. So I thought we dealt with the permit issue in the previous meeting. So that's all the questions I have.
Okay. First, Alterative Fields?
My question is that, back to the original recommendation by staff on changing the handicap parking as well to that new location, puts it in a difficult location for them to navigate going in and out based on the width of the parking lot in that location. So is that not a concern?
I just want to be clear that this is a variation of a canopy configuration. You know, it is based on roughly the size of what the applicant has currently installed, which is 640 feet, possibly even larger. Now, that, those parking calculations are based on the canopy calculations that the applicant had installed. Now, if they came in with permits, they could have come in with a smaller canopy, which would have reduced the parking requirements or reduced the parking requirement on-site. So it wouldn't be 70, it would be something less, and that would have given them more flexibility to rearrange the parking on-site.
Okay.
And I want to emphasize one thing is that what staff was proposing here was, as Ms. Louie indicated, one variation. We weren't saying that this is the do-all, end-all, you know, this was the only option available. Yes, this one did relocate the handicap parking spots, but I also want to emphasize that on the alternative that the applicant presented to you today, that they relocated the handicap spots as well. They shifted them further north. They're in the same general location, but they were relocated. So it wasn't that this is it, and this is the only way in which to meet the code. It was the canopy can be relocated to meet the setbacks. The striping of the parking can be redone to still provide the number of parking spots. Yes, it may be in one location versus the other, but we just felt like that there were alternatives available that didn't necessitate the variance and still provided the necessary parking.
The revision to the canopy that the applicant has made for today's meeting, the way I can see it, does not completely block the entrance to the restaurant and still allows the handicap spaces access to the building without having to go through seated table areas to get to it. So...
Correct. And we actually feel like the applicants is almost a similar version of this, with the exception of the location of the handicap spaces.
Which is what we asked them to do.
Right. And therefore, the portion of the canopy is, doesn't necessitate the variance. Really, what they're asking you for is not even the portion that deals with the parking lot. They're asking for the variance that deals with the portion connecting to the existing building. John, can I use your presentation? Sorry.
Correct. Correct.
So as they've shown as part of their alternative, they can relocate the parking spots to accommodate a canopy for outdoor seating that meets setbacks. They could potentially even make it a little bit bigger based, you know, again, the walkways and things like that would have to line up and so forth. But really, the only portion that they are asking for the variance for now is the existing canopy that is in yellow, that is in the setback.
Correct. Got you.
Sorry. Okay. Any other questions, this end? Go to Board Member Hyman.
Thank you. First of all, I apologize for not having been here at the last meeting to hear this whole conversation. While I don't accept the hardship explanation that the petitioner has provided, I do have a couple of questions about the lay of the land, so to speak. I see that the building itself is pretty much inside of whatever setback line we have today. Can you tell me how it got to be there?
The building line? You mean back here? You mean the variance that was previously approved?
Was there, was there, there was a variance previously?
There was a variance that was previously approved, and that was for the extension of this portion right here, and that was in order for the restaurant to comply with federal ADA standards. So it was an ADA accessibility issue, which the, you know, the restaurant or the building had to comply with.
And I understand that just because the variance was granted under whatever circumstances previously, it doesn't, it doesn't provide that any variance similar, that required similar to that for, for something that they've done should necessarily be considered as a part and parcel of that.
Correct.
I understand that. At the same time, I'm, I'm concerned that we're, because of the, because of our rules and regulations that we have, we have to use to opine on this, on this request, the request as it is, to me, makes sense from a, from the perspective of reality. And if it was a request for that variance, I believe with the letters of support that it has from the direct neighbors to the back and the, the attachment to the wall and, which makes it right there, basically, you know, I would have to vote to approve this. But if we're, if we're locked into not being able to do that based upon what our guidelines are, I guess I'm asking you, is there, is there any relief there for this board to make a logical decision as opposed to one that's solely based upon the restrictions that we're faced with?
That may be a question for Sam.
Yeah, well, direct it to whoever wants to take a shot at it.
Right. Yeah. Well, staff, yes.
If I'm, if I'm understanding your question, you are required to base your decision on whether or not the application meets all of the standards that's presented in your material. You do not have the latitude to relax or just amend those standards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Okay. I have no additional questions for staff at this time. So for that, we'll move to any members of the public who wish to comment on this. I'll open the public meeting, public hearing. Is there anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, last meeting, we did have some public comment. I don't believe we need to, that's all part of the record. So, and we did receive one additional voicemail, which Ms. Louie had entered into the record during her presentation. So with that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and that moves us to executive session. So we can go to, first, the board discussion, and I'll go ahead and I'll probably start on my right then with Vice Chair Kimmer. Any commentary?
Sure. I think as has come out today and as we addressed previously, we have to start with the rule itself, the ordinance at issue. What is the purpose of it?
Please use your mic. Your mic is not on.
Sorry?
Your mic is not on.
Just speak more closely.
It says it's on. And first of all, I don't see how the application in this place advances the purpose of the setback requirement. If the applicant can already use the land, that area, for the purposes of which they want, which is outdoor seating, I understand the differences with the permanent structure of a canopy. Think that the last time we, the board saw the issue here and looked for a reasonable way to avoid an impasse here, to come to some resolution, given that there is a pandemic and that this was a response by the applicant to address his legitimate business concerns. So given what's been presented and for the reasons laid out in the applicant's Exhibit A, I would, in these circumstances, vote to approve the applicant with the conditions provided by the staff and the alternative proposal that the applicant has made.
We'll go to discussion from Board Member Wood.
Well, I believe that, and I believe that the board looked at this last time and took, actually took a straw poll to determine if we could find a resolution to this for them, and it was decided that we move this to another meeting so the applicant could have an opportunity to review their application and try to come to some compromise, which now I see was never going to occur. However, in good faith, I think the applicant has done just that, and I was in favor of the proposal last time, and I would support it today.
Okay. Go to Mr. Fields.
After further reviewing and studying, and I'm in agreeance with the applicant's interpretation of the standards and that they meet the standards based on what they presented to us in their exhibit. So based on that, I feel that we should move forward with approving.
Okay. Go to Board Member Barlow.
Thank you. I would like to ask my colleagues to just step back and evaluate the fact that we are empowered to only allow applicants variances when they meet all 10, all 10 standards. Staff, who are our skilled, knowledgeable experts in presenting in evidence and facts and information on the 10 factors, we have to rely on that, and we've done that in the past, and we'll do that going forward, just like we're going to do it today. We're in a situation where out of the 10 factors, and all 10 have to be met, I'm not going to go through, I apologize, I wasn't here last month, but again, I'm not going to go through each 10, but all 10 have to be met. And we're in a situation where if staff is not stating that there's compliance in eight out of the 10, particularly when you're looking in front of you in this PowerPoint slide where there's plenty of spaces, this comes down to a business cost. I'm not gonna vary from my past voting when applicants have come before us, and applicants have the burden, not staff. Staff never have the burden to compromise, but I'm not going to, number one, allow when individuals ask for forgiveness instead of permission. The fact that we're looking at 16 feet, they clearly can comply, they can eliminate this altogether, they can move the 16 feet so it can comply in a different area, it's a business cost, and that happens a lot, and they can reconfigure it, increase their costs, increase their leased parking spaces to Walgreens, which is part of the evidence today. They have all these variations, but we're going to have a slippery slope if every time an applicant comes before us and we shift the burden to staff and having staff somehow compromise when these 10 factors, all 10, not nine out of 10, or seven out of 10, or in this case, two out of 10, when all 10 must comply, it's a slippery slope that why even bother to have code enforcement or even have codes? So I strongly recommend you all, there are alternatives, I don't even know how they get to number one, A, they have alternatives, even alternatives of permanent structures, let alone maintaining their business. We're going to be living with COVID for a very long time, so I strongly ask my colleagues to please consider what our obligation is, what evidence is in front of us, not only from the applicant who had the burden, but also from staff, and I hope that we do not vote and allow this variance. Thank you.
Go to Board Member Hyman. Go to Board Member Hyman for discussion.
Just a question relative to the, um, the conditions that have been suggested, uh, is the staff in compliance, is the staff in agreement that with those conditions, it meets the, uh, what, what our, what our job is if we were to approve this, or does it, does it fall short of that?
Uh, we could let staff verify that, but I, I would, I'll take the first stab if, if you'd like, as we're in board discussion, uh, just to say that I, I think staff is unchanging in their position that they're recommending denial, but recognizing that this board could recommend approval, staff is saying to mitigate, um, concerns that they have raised, they would recommend at a minimum, if, if approval were to be granted, that those conditions be included, but it doesn't change the fact that staff is recommending denial, and I'll ask, okay, we got a thumbs up, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
No further questions.
Okay. Um, I'll say, I, I know the question was raised here about the, uh, about the 10 variant standards, and, you know, I read through in both prior to the last meeting and, and prior to today's meeting, uh, you did, did read through the, the staff presentation, but also read through, um, in our backup material, the justifications provided by the applicant, and I think that, um, the applicant made a compelling case, uh, with respect to the variant standards, and I, I think a lot of the hardship derives from the fact that, um, you know, that, that they're dealing with a, a built environment on this site where you've got a, a building and, you know, positioned in a certain place, and yet, the building already extends into the rear setback because of this board already previously granted a variance, and that's not on the table and not part of our decision today, but they are in fact working with trying to create a, an outdoor area that's attached to a building that's already back in, in, in this variant setback, and is also dealing with a, a parking lot that's, you know, if, if you were to scrape the entire site and build over, it would be a lot easier to, I think, accommodate all these items, um, without encroaching into the, the setbacks, but, but they're, they're working with, um, with a number of constraints that are just inherent to, to what's already there in, in terms of where the part, where the building is, where the layout is and everything, and I think it's also compelling to consider the fact that, you know, that, that a lot of this stems back to compatibility with, uh, surrounding uses, and has been pointed out, there can be tables and seating in this area, it's, uh, so if you talk about the compatibility and any adverse impacts felt by the neighboring residents, those would be felt, but, um, with or, with or without the canopy, if, if these seats were, were put there, it was just, this was an attempt to provide a safe, covered, you know, sort of, uh, weatherproof area for, uh, you know, to be provided then. We did mention at the last meeting that we're not really in a fan, a fan of someone coming in after the fact and coming in for, uh, for forgiveness for other position, and we don't like to be in that position, and, and I think, uh, Ms. Barlow made a, a very good point to that effect, and I think that's, uh, certainly not a, a situation we like to be in, but that is a situation we are in here in, in reviewing this. I think that, um, that what we've, we've seen, and, and again, the, the fact that they, um, that staff, it, I think one of the interesting things about the, the three conditions are that, as is sort of pointed out, and I don't think it was necessarily highlighted, they could go in and put in outdoor seating without the canopy, they could put in with umbrellas, and not be subject to any of those three conditions related to lighting, noise, et cetera. So if anything, if this were to be approved with those conditions attached, it actually provides a little bit more compatibility and, and, um, and sort of protection for surrounding uses by attaching those conditions to this variance than they would necessarily be allowed to by right, just putting in tables without a, a canopy over, so it actually, in theory, again, and I'm, and I am in support of, of recommending those, those conditions if this were to, to move forward, um, because I think that does give an additional protection for the residents, but again, that's more protection they'd have than if, if there were just seats, you know, seating out there, which could be provided within, you know, five feet or more of the, uh, of the property line with, with no permanent structure, so, yeah, further discussion?
If I could just say, I'd like to just ask, um, I think that what this board, if you guys approve this variance with those conditions, you're really setting up staff that they should no longer even allow us to have this middle position, so I just want to make sure that each and every one of you all, if you're voting in fairness of this variance, you're saying that the 10 factors, every single 10 factor has been met, and that you're not coming up with this compromise where we're not even meeting our minimum burden, which is making sure that there is evidence that all 10 factors are met, so, and good luck, staff, in the future, whether or not you guys should even list conditions, because that's the danger you're going to run into in the future with this board.
Understood. Any further discussion among the board?
I just want to say, again, I, I think that the, the board has a duty to consider both sides, um, to consider the, the applicant's response to those conditions as well as staff, and make a determination based on those conditions where they're, they're met. Otherwise, there's no, no need for the board either, so the board has to consider both the conditions that this, uh, from the point of view of staff and from the point of view of the applicant, and how do we apply those to whether they've met those conditions? So I've gone through and looked at it from both sides, and so that's where I'm at at this point.
But I think Mr. Thomas can speak to, I think the burden's on the applicant to show that all 10 factors are met, and then what we do is then evaluate all the evidence of the applicant if they met this burden, and then also the evidence and the facts presented by staff, so the burden is on the applicant first and not on staff.
Understood, yeah, and I think that's, I think this is healthy debate to have, I think that's, that's good, and I think, I think it is important for us to, uh, to fully, uh, review the, the evidence that's, that's before us in the case, and, and I, I think that, you know, we've heard, we've heard a lot of that in both, both the hearings.
You know, from a, from a personal standpoint, um, I've been on the other side of this table when I have opposed and been perhaps the only, uh, resident, if you will, opposing a petition, and seeing that petition be approved by this board when it, when it flew in the face of all of the criteria, but perhaps for whatever reasons, the petitioner was able to prevail. Um, I can't, in good conscience, vote in that, in that I was in the position of, of that voice in the wind, so to speak. We, we have a staff, we, we asked them to do this work, and when our attorney tells us that we have to opine based on what the, the facts are, I don't see how we can avoid that, uh, you know, I mean, our staff's not going to turn around and sue us, but, but if it was reversed, you know, we, we put ourselves in a position that questions the validity of this, of this board, unfortunately, okay? So...
And the validity of even having codes, this is a permanent structure that we're now going to be potentially voting in favor of a variance when clearly the number one, there is nothing unique, we have seen time and time and again, and we'll see it in the future, where literally the site, the physical lot in sight allows the petitioner and the applicant no other alternatives. That's not true here. I mean, number one, if they want to have outdoor dining, they can still have outdoor dining, we're talking about 16 feet, if they want those number of tables to have a permanent structure, they can reconfigure this parking lot and put it in the front, I mean, first watch on Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard literally has their outdoor dining right up against Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, if they choose they want to maintain this permanent structure, but we're not going to approve that 16 feet, they can still have those tables, they can increase the lease, I mean, there's so many different alternatives, and there is nothing unique about this lot that would even justify A, and let alone, we've got our staff who are experts in this field who are saying they can't even meet eight out of the 10. So I promise I will, that is the end, I've said my piece, but I really want to make sure that if you are voting in favor of this variant, that you are saying they have met all 10, and that even includes with the conditions, it's not like they only have to meet five of them, but I'm going to put the conditions on, you're saying that even if you vote with the conditions, they've met all 10.
Mr. Chair, just, uh, just for clarity, in terms of, of making your decision, now you are required to consider all of the competent substantial evidence presented at this hearing, whether it comes from staff, the applicant, or members of the public, you're to consider all of that evidence in making your decision.
Correct, yeah, and I think all that has been entered into the record, uh, again, I think, you know, and I think to a certain extent, um, you know, you know, staff is, is looking at a very literal interpretation of the code, and that's, and that's certainly, you know, been done here, I think there are some, you know, we, you know, and, and there are certainly experts in, in all of the land use related items, I think when it comes to an applicant such as this coming forward, um, they're an expert in the customer service, the restaurant business, and how, you know, being able to get the patrons in the door and where they need to be, you know, what, where they need to be, uh, routed to get, to get in, they know how their operations work, and I know with the, the staff proposed, um, you know, and again, staff did, it did reiterate that that was only one possible option, but there were, part of the reason they, that the applicant said that, that just flat out can't work is that, is the way that you can't get, you know, the folks from the handicap spaces, for example, to the front door, and I think, again, they know their operations, and I think nobody likes to come in front of this board with a recommendation of denial, I think they would have attempted, uh, any opportunity to, to comply to, to avoid that recommendation, but knowing, you know, how their, where their customers wait, where they're, where they're seated, where they're served, you know, how you get from the kitchen to these tables that are going to be outdoors, that, that, it was ultimately determined that, you know, that they could maybe modify it somewhat to, uh, to lessen the variance, but there wasn't a way to, to escape that in order to, to still operate, and I think, you know, and again, they're an expert in, in, in that and, and knowing how they operate, so I think that's, that's kind of how we end up where we are. Is there any further discussion? Well, entertain a motion then on, on this, on item, uh, ZBA 3396.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant ZBA case number 3396, a request by John Schmidt of Schmidt Nichols on behalf of Southern Boulevard Holdings LLC for a variance from section 94145 to D of the zoning and land development regulations to follow to allow an outdoor canopy within the required rear setback of the property located at 330 Southern Boulevard within the general commercial zoning district. The motion is based upon testimony presented along with the applicant, application submitted, and the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that each of the criteria in Article II, Section 94-38D6 of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations, ZLDRs, have been met. In addition, the granting of the variance is made conditional upon the following restrictions, stipulations, and/or safeguards that I move are necessary to ensure compliance with the proposed and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach. Number one, lighting under the outdoor canopy shall be kept to a minimum, any lighting provided shall be required to be shielded from the abutting residential use to a minimum light spillover and glare, lighting shall not exceed .5-foot candles when measured at the south property line. Number two, no amplified sound, including audio and live music, shall be permitted under the outdoor canopy. Number three, the outdoor seating area under the canopy shall be clearly defined and separate from the vehicular use area with installation of a permanent and attractive barrier around the seating area for added safety. The applicant will be required to apply for the necessary building permits.
Okay, uh, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I have one question, is this with regards to the original application or the alternative?
Alternative.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, uh, we'll ask the, uh, Board Secretary to please call the roll.
Christopher Cameron.
Aye.
Michael Wood.
Aye.
Christopher Hagan.
Aye.
Malika Barlow.
Nay, decline.
Michael Hyman.
Nay.
Okay, it's not approved, uh, because we need four votes in order for that to be approved. Do we need a substitute motion, or is that the?
Final.
Okay.
Mr. Field?
Well, we have, yeah, I, the, yeah, does the alternate, I mean, we have an alternate present, but that's, uh...
Yeah, because Mr. Burgess stepped out, does Mr. Fields become a voting member at that point, so that there's six voting members, or do we only need five?
The membership is five.
Five, okay.
Quorum is five.
Okay.
In terms of the members who voted, would you state full of the record the standards that you see were not met?
I can go first, so again...
Excuse me, one second. Do, Sam, I, I, just some clarification, are you asking the same of the people who voted in favor of it, or is that stated in the motion?
The motion was that all...
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
...the purposes of the applicant, if you would state the standards that were not met.
Do you want me to go first?
Uh, yes, you can go ahead.
Um, Malika Barlow, I state that factor A, peculiar to land structure or building, was not met with the evidence, um, presented by the applicant, uh, B, actions of the applicant, um, and there was two others. Uh, I'm sorry, I had it written down on there. Uh, E, minimum request, the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of land building or structure, and lastly, public welfare, the variance will not, will not be injurious to the area involved or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare.
Okay, and Board Member Hyman?
Mr. Chairman, I, Michael Hyman, um, my nay vote was based upon, uh, standard A, peculiar to land structure buildings, uh, and E, uh, minimum request.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll move on in the agenda, uh, the second case was withdrawn, uh, that was Zoning Board of Appeals case number 3393, so that won't be heard today.
Correct.
Um, that, that'll move us on to any administrative appeals, there are none, unfinished business, there's none, new business, there's none, and other business, there's none, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
That's my motion.
Okay, moved by Board Member Barlow and seconded by Board Member, or Vice Chair Cameron, uh, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.